Welcome to Our World, Our Power Radio. As you know, I'm Lady Pauline and my co-host is Mr. Glenn Greenwich, the Honorable Mayor of Southern Boulevard. Welcome, Councilman Miller, to our world. We have a thank you so much for taking the time to come and speak with us.
Interesting time. We're actually, um, so I have my other laptop here and there is a, um, a city council hearing chaired by Councilmember Richards, Donovan Richards, on enforcement of social distancing with the NYPD. So I just got through questioning and giving testimony and kind of just trying to keep up with that because unfortunately we know that there's real disparities in our community in terms of how enforcement happens and throughout the city. So multitasking.
Yes, Councilman Miller, I'm very glad you brought that up because I happen to live on Southern Boulevard. And I saw something the other day that was kind of troublesome. Wherein plainclothes police officers pulled over a car. And the reason that they pulled the car over is because the gentleman driving the car did not have on his face mask. So of course, everybody came to the terrace and the window and there was, you know, photographing the incident. And then somebody turned around to the police officers and said, "Well, where's your face mask?" So, um...
Yeah. That question came up. In fact, the Chair Richards asked that question, that you can't enforce something that you're not going to do yourself. I think what we see around not just the social distancing problem from, you know, I know this is not about public safety or police department, but oftentimes is you can forge a relationship with the 103rd precinct, the 113th precinct, the 105th precinct that I represent. And I happen to think that for the most part, we have good leadership. We have good community affairs and good relationships. But it's the cowboys that run around in unmarked vehicles that are pretty unaccountable. And you call the precinct about that experience that you just articulated and your response you'll get is like, "Uh, they're not one of ours. We don't really know." So these guys kind of ride around the neighborhood with impunity. We can have it and no one oftentimes don't know who they are, which is why we introduced the right-to-know legislation. And which was you have to, when you stop for a stop, that you have to at least, they have to identify themselves. And at the end of the stop, they have to give you a card with all their information.
Yeah, that was very disturbing, you know?
Yeah. Miller, is that, um, they're part of the, what's it, the SRS? Or, um, so they're not attached to the actual precinct? Is that how it works basically?
Correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, so they may be like Queens South or narcotics or something like that and not attached to a specific precinct. And so, you know, we, although, you know, we'll have those relationships that we're able to forge as community leaders. And it just, into officers and people in the community, they don't exist with those folks there, right? And those are the ones who were historically responsible for the disproportionate stop and frisk or for the marijuana disparities that we saw particularly in Queens and, you know, and places like that. And less transparency and accountability on that side.
You know, I know that, um, that has come up quite a bit, the conversation of the dual allowances. You know, Central Park has got all of the folks, you know, clustering. And then you've got, had the scene with the brother that got slammed to the ground.
Right.
And I know you guys are working on that. Have you seen any?
So that's actually, that's actually the hearing that's happening now. And they're talking about, well, they're giving out masks all over the place. But I have the list of parks, particularly in Queens. They're like Jupiter Park, there are Astoria Park. There are parks that aren't in our community, right? And so we, you know, that we've been giving out masks and I'm in the park or wherever we are. So, you know, although I will say this, my contention that enforcement of social distancing and social distancing itself is a public health issue.
Right.
It's not a policing issue. This public health crap involved in this stuff here, right? And so, um, how do we engage our community? And we've been doing a lot of that, a lot of these Zooms on so many different levels. And I'm sure we're going to talk about, you know, the economic supports to our small business network and, you know, our community-based organizations and all those things that are happening there. We're doing those things around that. But in terms of enforcement and public safety, I think, you know, there's certainly something that should not be left up to the police department to do that. Even just the enforcement. But I will say, and I will share that there was a young man who was killed on a motorcycle early Tuesday morning. And Tuesday night, they had a candlelight vigil on Springfield Boulevard. Hundred fifty to two hundred young people. Motorcycles, the whole, everything that we would expect. And, and, um, so, you know, I got a call locally, you know, knew the family. Unfortunately, the family was the same family that the five young people were burned in the fire in Queens Village two years ago.
Yes.
Same family. But this was a twenty-two-year-old. And, and, um, so we have relationships with the family anyway. Got the call and then subsequently that he had passed. And then subsequently that they wanted to do. And I reached out to Inspector Bohannon at the 113. And he gave me kind of the lowdown on the accident logistics, the investigation, where it was going and yada, yada. Appeared that there was some recklessness involved, right? One in the morning, not a lot of people on the road you're riding, all that stuff. So I'm like, okay, you know, you don't necessarily take that, but, you know, for what it is. But, you know, I do my work in relationship, you know, based on that information. That's why I go to kind of investigate my grieving. That is one of my sources. So I take that. That's good. A few minutes later, I hear that they're going to do a candlelight vigil. All right? And then I called the commander. And because Springfield Boulevard is a major thoroughfare, right? And new closing off both sides of that street to trucks, buses and cars and all that was interesting. And so when I, and so the commander says, "You know what? I'll meet you over there and we'll go and pay our respects together." You know? And we did that and that street was blocked off. And, you know, we both looked like, this can't really happen. And so went to the leadership. You know, the motorcycle club folks that were there, the, you know, the older group and some of the family and expressed that and they were immediately compliant. Although a lot of young people doing the traditional, turning it up in what they do. And I will say that the police department kind of followed the lead of their commander. And, uh, in a situation that could have easily gone left, it was a masterful situation. And what I would say is it is that kind of confirms something that I always say, which is you don't forge a relationship in a moment of crisis.
True.
Right? You've got to have a relationship before this. So if I could pick up the phone and say, "Hey Inspector, what happened?" And here's what's going to happen. And, you know, maybe we can work collaboratively or vice versa. Or say he called me and says, "Hey Councilman, this is what happened." And, you know, it's probably going to get out of hand. And could you come out? What if we didn't have a relationship? And I'm like, "Who are you? What do you want? You know, why should I do that?" Right? And it has happened, not necessarily just with that agency, but others, right? Where you don't have a relationship. Or it could just be in your personal life, right? And then, and then you're asking for things. So it was important that in the downtime, the non-COVID times, or even in the COVID time, when you have time to just check in on people, right? Where you don't need anything or want anything. Those are the times when you have an opportunity to really cultivate relationships and find out what's happening with businesses in the district, what's happening with schools in the district, what are happening, you know, what's happening in banking, what's happening in youth services and what's happening with our seniors? You know, not in a moment of crisis, right? And so it is very difficult to respond. On top of the fact that we will discuss all of our future plans, all of our ideas are grandeur for the Southern Boulevard corridor and all these other things. But it's the day-to-day occurrences that dictate everything that we do, right? We all have these big agenda items. The fact of the matter is, it is the COVs, it is the this, it is that. Just the things that happen day-to-day that often take precedent. But you have to have these conversations about supporting these, these, these big ideas.
Yes.
And you have to stay on track as much as possible.
Um, Councilman Miller, I know you're involved with the Censors, the Censors. How do you feel that it's going at the present time?
Well, I know the outreach is, is, is going fantastic in the district because, you know, nearly every night I'm on or somebody else is on and we're doing, you know, they're doing parties and doing town halls and doing all these things there. But, you know, sometimes you're preaching to the crowd, right? Because are we reaching our target audience? I know where I am and, and, you know, I'm proud and could be. But, you know, in Cambridge Heights, we have some of the highest numbers in Queens, right? We're up over sixty-something percent, right? But that's still sixty percent, that's still forty percent of the community services that aren't going to happen, right? Just because, you know, you're at the top of a very low bar is nothing, you know, right home about. Because we all as a community can be better. We know the notion is if you, you know, if you have a hundred children and you're only receiving funds for sixty children, that means that the services are woefully insufficient, right? What we are seeing now in terms of this global pandemic and national pandemic, as we depend on these federal resources, the infrastructure or lack thereof that really contribute to all these pre-existing conditions are intricately related to services and funding that come by virtue of Censors. So it's super, super, super important. You know, my, part of my background and my main professional focus is in transportation. And we live in transportation deserts, right? And, and, and particularly from you guys' standpoint, from a business standpoint, a social and even an education standpoint, but it also impacts healthcare and everything that we do. Transportation is the great equalizer. If you want to suppress the community, take away their transportation option. Put them out, put them in Rosedale somewhere, put them in Cambridge Heights. And put them, put them somewhere that your family won't even come visit you on the weekend if they are dependent on public transportation, right? That also means that the business community is probably solely dependent on that community to support them, right? And, and, you know, and so if you're not, if our community is sidelined and not receiving the type of financial supports from those institutions and other things to sustain themselves or lift themselves up from a business perspective to make those type of investments. And you are solely dependent on those communities around you, it is difficult considering that, you know, and when we talk about why, you know, our dollar stays in our community twelve to fourteen hours in twenty-eight days and twenty-five days in another community. It is because, you know, and when we think about that, we get mad at our Yemenese brothers that are running a bodega or something, right? Who live in the community with us, right? That is not it. It is that we live in communities that nearly sixty-five percent of the people have private health insurance. But we don't have the healthcare infrastructure to support that, right? And so you take that private health insurance and you go outside the community and you go see a doctor, you go see a dentist, you go see, you know, an ophthalmologist or an attorney or whatever it is. Those are the big-ticket items that we're not even looking at. Aside from supermarkets and stuff like that, right? And, and, you know, those are things that, it happens. It is, you know, it was a story that I tell that there are, there are a group of doctors in St. Albans, you know, Southeast Queens area. A number of them who live, practice, opening up a practice. And opening up a practice, how difficult is it, they found, when you are not credentured by the large insurance companies, right? Insurance companies like Empire, right? Which the majority of their clients, customers are city employees, right? Nearly, uh, well, we have four hundred thousand city employees plus retirees. That's probably a million, you know, and like that. That's, that's the majority of their client base. And then you have Health First and other people like that. And we don't, we speak truth to power, so I call people out. And they are not credentialing these small businesses, these MWBE businesses that support minority communities that potentially mitigate all these pre-existing conditions, right? How does that happen? That is, when you don't credential them, that means they can't accept the insurance. That means you or I, if we choose to be serviced by these practitioners who live, who happen to be our neighbors, right? Who want to set up a practice in the community, unless we go and pay cash, we can't go.
The money, the money is going outside the community.
Right, because you have to, you have to, like, if you want to take that insurance card and use it, you've got to take it somewhere else because the big insurance, that is the systematic racism, right? That happened. It's like, even when you have folks that, you know, these are world-renowned, you know, best-trained physicians now they're not affiliated with, you know, a big hospital network. They're not taking the insurance. But in part as well, right? That they're not. And so even when, if you go to, and your part of your business plan is assessing the need for your service, right? And if you look at, wow, this, this community has all these people who need healthcare and more than sixty percent of them have private insurance. That's the, any, any healthcare practice, if you look at a setup of business, that's a goldmine, right? But why is it not happening, right? And that is the institutional stuff that we have to get to, that we have to address. How do we say to these state insurance boards that it is unfair and unjust that these people aren't credentialing qualified businesses, qualified practitioners in these black and brown communities so that they can provide services so that people are not having to leave outside of the community? And then the long-term effect of that is that while we're worrying about our Yemenese brothers, you know, on the corner with the bodegas, we're taking the big dollars in healthcare and other things outside of the community.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really important. And how we receive services on a census basis, right? Because the census is going to count and evaluate the services, infrastructure and/or the lack thereof, right? And so that is, is really super important. And then not to digress in that way, but when we came out of the box very, very strongly and I think with the leadership of Congressman Meeks and Senator Comrie and all those, and all of my colleagues here in Southeast Queens. And I think, you know, we were by far the hardest hit right off the top, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But how we were able to transition is because of the leadership and the collaboration that every day we do a call, every day. And then we do these collectively, you know, and by combining those resources at the city, state and federal level, we are doing more testing in Southeast Queens now than anywhere in the city, right? And all these resources are coming in because we're working collectively. But the importance of that and what we learned from the, what we learned from the census was if you do not, if you're not counted, right? You're not funded.
Yeah.
Like you, you pretty much don't exist. And so that was testing, right? Testing, what does testing do for COVID-19? It tells you first of all, in real time and immediacy, what, where do those resources have to go? Who's being hit the hardest, right? What resources are needed and where do they need to go, right? And so if you're not being tested, those resources are going somewhere else, right? And then secondly, how do you trace, track those who are infected and prevent that from happening if you're not testing in real time, right? So one, resources. Two is to prevent that. And then, you know, incidentally, coming post-COVID, coming out of this is, is where does resources need to go when these stimulus packages happen? When these infrastructure bills get passed, right? Where does it, where does it go? How do we connect with these communities that suffer these disparities if in fact, they have never been identified, right? And that was the reason we were pushing for, for, for the testing, right? Because next year, this time, when money is distributed, resources and funding, they're like, "Ah, you know, they had high blood pressure. You know, they, you know, them eating habits in there. You know, they had diabetes, you know." It's every excuse and other than COVID-19 because we would have never been tested for COVID-19. And therefore, any resources related to that don't come to the community, right? So what do we learn from, from census? Is that you, that you've got to be in it to win it. If you don't, if you don't, you're not counted. And then that, that information and that experience is directly related to COVID-19. And we've already begun to see that, how the narrative have changed once we fought very aggressively. And so I will say that the Black Latino Asian Caucus at the city council, which is co-chaired by myself and Adrian, Councilmember Adams, who represent more than half of the city's eight-point-six-million New Yorkers, wrote some very strong letters to the mayor and the governor asking for testing and talking about the disparities very early in March about the impact of these disparities and lack of testing and what was going to happen. And so we saw that, but you also see them respond. And one of the things that we have to continue to be vigilant for is just because they respond in a way, they open every press conference that they do. They're kind of pervasive by acknowledging these communities that have been disproportionately impacted, right? At the end of the day, what does that mean, right? It has to be, it has to translate into resources. And so testing is nice. The majority of the PP happens in Queens don't necessarily have access to these resources, right? So all of these historic disparities that have been highlighted by COVID-19 have long existed. But this is an opportunity for us to really identify them and figure out what we need to do to move forward.
Councilman Miller, I agree with you one hundred percent. Now, how does the average person get tested out here in Southeast Jamaica, Queens? Do they, do they know where to go?
So, so I'm going to send you our link, our website. We post it every day along with our colleagues, Comrie, Hyman, Adams, Meeks and Sanders and Vanel and Cook. We all have it posted and you can go on because there are none of them and they changed yesterday. We actually had, there was some additional.
There was some in the church or something.
Antibody testing, right? The antibody testing was done faith-based. Now initially, we had Reverend O'Connor and were partnering with Community Health Network and they're doing something, something. And their network, Adabo Center is now doing. In fact, Emblem Health is now just this week opening up. So if you are part of the Emblem Health Network as well, this week. So there was three, I think it was four, maybe five churches in Queens that are doing the antibody testing. And those of those three or five, all those four or five, three of them were in Southeast Queens. That was Allen, Greater Springfield, which they are at this week. And then I believe next week, they're going to move over to New Jerusalem.
Okay.
Right? And so they're doing antibody testing as well. York College for Essential Workers. And so this information, yeah, it is readily available now and it's coming up online. Also, city MDs, city med, they're doing testing there as well. Yeah, so, and so there's regular testing, do you, are you positive? And then there now have come online is the antibody testing as well. And that's readily available.
Question for you. I know part of the budget has taken a huge hit because of the taxes. I think it's seven-point-four billion dollars revenue lost. How's that going to impact next year's budget?
So I will tell you that it is closer to, so we're, yesterday, we wrapped up the final, or Wednesday wrapped up the final budget hearing, executive budget hearing. And the number is close to the ten billion.
Wow.
And that is really incumbent on the dollars that come from the federal government, right? And so, you know, it's tough to say that we're actually depending on the federal government. Thus far, there's not been that, you know, far. But if we can be, some semblance of that, you know, obviously it's going to be based on what happens there. You know, I know our federal, uh, our federal leadership in, uh, in the Congress and the US Senate has been very generous in their bill. But, you know, I don't think any bill that is ultimately generous to New York City is going to get past the Senate. That being said, you know, I am hopeful that we have support that helps mitigate that gap that we see. Certainly, you know, we're not expecting to see an eight to ten million dollar gap that is reported. If we can get it all, then there's Um, if we can get it all, then it's business as usual. Um, but right now, so on the service side, a couple of things. Each agency uh has been uh asked to take a cut, you know, that pays. And 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 so, um, but even that has to be equitable. I I will tell you that the uh Black Latino and Asian Caucus has position uh that the budget, the Department of Aging, uh, 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 and and Department of 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 uh the Division for Youth and DIFDA are going to take thirty and forty percent hits uh for our seniors and our youth. And our police department, um, who has the largest budget in the city's budget, is going to take less than a one percent uh hit on their budget, right? So we're asking that they are more far more transparent in what that even include. We don't know what their budget even includes for the for the for the most part. And then there's a lot of responsibilities that aren't necessarily uh police responsibilities, right? So as I mentioned, at 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 the outset of this, whether or not it is the primary function of the police to be engaged in a public health enforcement of of COVID and or uh their 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 budget for youth services, seniors, like all these other things, then that's not their primary responsibility, probably not their responsibility at all. And then all the work that happens that are being done by officers, that could potentially be done by civilians in-house and otherwise, you know, there's just a plethora of things that go into it, I think that we could see that could significantly reduce their budget and create more equity in in how services get delivered and that we're not putting the emphasis on on policing, right? So so that's also a a part of it. Um, obviously, taxes uh for for us in Southeast Queens for homeowners is a big part of it, right? In that there is there is a lot of uh we don't know where where we we what we know for a fact that there's a significant loss in revenue.
Yeah.
You know, based on sales, taxes and taxes and 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 real estate and so forth. But but the real property taxes, which impact us and and and, you know, those uh for small real estate holdings are are important. We ask that um early in in early April, in fact, in late March, before we went to April first, when when the first quarter taxes were due, um, that the cities suspend those taxes, right? Uh, for COVID purposes, like they're they they've um suspended any um court proceedings related to uh a rent and even uh foreclosures if your bank is located here in New York State. And and so we thought that it'd be would be really helpful here in the city, particularly in places like Southeast Queens, where where you have, you know, majority of our residents are are homeowners. Uh, it it is, it's 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 an anomaly because seventy six percent of the people in the city rent, right? And and so, but for those homeowners who in this time need help just like everybody else, um, or more so, um, we ask that they suspend that. We ask that programs that support um uh rent subsidies such as Street and Dree, which is uh uh support for um seniors and disabled renters, um, that those programs be that the people enrolled in the program be uh remain enrolled without an actual renewal, because the renewals are actually done, usually done in person. And they usually also have a uh some sponsor or family member that usually fills out the paperwork on their behalf, right?
True.
And so that wasn't happening. And potentially, they'd lose that benefit, right? If they don't renew in time. And in terms of the taxes, so what they agreed to do is like, okay, the state law forbids that to happen, but if they call us, um, we won't reenroll them, but we won't kick them out of the program. We'll give them a chance to do so. In terms of the taxes, we have not got a response other than that there's things in place that allow for late payments and they will not charge uh right, you will accrue interest on the late payments. So still working on that. Um, and in order for that to hap- happen, you 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 have to call them and say, hey, important, the consistencies in the city revenue is in the real estate tax and the property taxes. And and that unfortunately impacts us and there is no remedy for that, because there there's no remedy for people have small two and three family homes, right? Now, and 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 particularly predicated on those rents, right? You don't get a mortgage if you don't prove, you stay, you know, on one hand, they're saying that the tenant pay and have not necessarily remedied the situation um for 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 the homeowner of that two or three family home as well. So those are some of the things that that we are fielding in our office on that. But the budget's gonna have, you know, severe implications on how the services get delivered in our community. Um, uh, on, you know, uh, there are projects that are already in the cooker um that probably will continue to happen on the capital side, um, which would be great. Um, in particular, um, there has been no cuts to the uh affordable housing. Um, you know, that continues and and that's a big part of the Renaissance in the downtown Jamaica area and 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 what happens there. And and so that is uh really important, but certainly it's gonna impact other things like the rezonings and other things that we've talked about and 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 uh for the downtown area, the long term visions and and, you know, we we we'll deal with that accordingly. Uh, one of the things that I local movement more you know, we are taxpayers that we contribute so much to this this municipality. Uh, we want the services at the highest level, we want the investment at the highest level. But something else real quick, and that is something that's been on my heart and mind since COVID and just looking at the community and the potential impacts of what we see, what's gonna happen to to businesses that potentially shut down, homeowners potentially pose and all these things, it's going to be interesting, right? When, you know, I know that you've been a part of 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 uh movement on the uh Southeast Queens Credit Union and and things like that, right? And 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 that, the lack of that type of financial infrastructure and other infrastructure that we were talking about. Look now, right, an institution like that could be at the forefront of PPPs, right? Because the big banks aren't lending in our community. We need those type of institutions that are culturally competent, that have investment from the community to be able to reinvest in the community, super important.
Absolutely.
And and as we come out of that, it's gonna be so absolute. That's where my, you know, some things that we're researching, my heart is there and, you know, post council and all of those things is, you know, as we look at infrastructure, you know, how do we ensure it? Um, because what we can't do is we can't as Malcolm would say, they Goldberg or Greenberg or anybody else to reinvest in the community, right? Because because that's what's happening, right? Because we have had in the last two months, three Walgreens stores closed down and within like a square mile, right? One at Farmers and one twelve, one at Springfield and Hempstead, and then just last week, the one at Springfield and one in front of us, right? All within walking distance of each other.
And also, also Councilman, uh, Miller, I've also seen certain McDonald's also, two of them have closed down. One on something.
So 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 I think the one on something is opened back up, but part of that, I think the corporation itself required them, if they were privately owned, that they had to do this major renovation to their new, whatever their new corporate uh uh the social image and physical, the store, physical store was. And and the corporate stores could afford to do it and some of the individual mom and pop MWBs could not afford this two million dollar investment, and so we saw that. And so, and I mention that to say, when these institutions close down in our community, right? And in the case of the of the Walgreens, some of them, we had to change, we had to do, you you were there, community board, uh zoning changes with this, right? And and to put them there, right? Because we're like, okay, we need a pharmacy. But now, now that we changed the zoning, do we end up with a dollar store or something like that, right? And and I I think the point that we're making here is how do you control commerce in your community if you don't control investment in your community, right? And 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 so are we begging somebody to come in and and create healthcare infrastructure or whatever it is that we're talking about, whatever our needs are, we some of the things that we've done from my office in conjunction with some of our um local development corps bids and others that we've done, um, the surveys as to, you know, what are the needs if a storefront or a store or a a business, I don't know, what opened up in the community? We have a list of, you know, one to ten. Here, we 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 want to see, you know, a medical facility, we want to see a doctor's dentist office or insurance, we want to see a gym or whatever, right? And then you can go to, you know, National Black Doctors or whatever and say, hey, this is what this survey says, we have sixty five percent of these people have insurance and 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 we want you to open up and there is a space, right? And so we kind of did that research, but the the investment and the support that goes behind it is what concerns me, right? Are we willing to, you know, keep our dollars in our community and and reinvest and and what does that look like? And so what is that network? How do we begin to do that? Is it with the credit union, is it is it individual investors? You know, what does it look like? But it is, it is great that, you know, we are, you know, at least probably world, known throughout the world, but certainly throughout the country, that this enclave of of African American homeownership, you know, Southeast Queens is the largest enclave of 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 African American homeownership in the entire country.
Yeah.
Right? But what does it mean, right? What does it mean? Long term wealth building, we understand that that's why we fight so hard, you know, against, you know, the foreclosure and all the or all the uh predatory lending and all that stuff that happens there. But even beyond that, how do we even transfer wealth? Right? Even in the so called empowerment zones that of Jamaica, you know, and stuff like that, that only applicable to capital gains and, you know, do you have capital gains that you want to reinvest, right? How are we educating folks to really nitty gritty impact our community socially, economically, politically? At at like the highest level for for years to come. And 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 I think that we had a really good foundation and, you know, a good part of that, and which is why we're able to respond to COVID and a lot of other crises that occur in our community. But the economics, we gotta do better, you know? Oh, and and how do we invest in our, because clearly, we are the perpetual consumers, right? We we spend more money than anybody.
You could say that again.
If we can get in our heads that ISIS is colder than somebody else's life. Spending at home, okay, yeah, instead of jumping across the 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 county and the green acres and spending money in green acres, and you're not, that doesn't doesn't even support the tax base.
We'll be right back. But first, are you a small business owner looking for solutions? TMI and Partners is a business solution company, offering operational branding and financial solution. For only nine ninety nine a month, your company will be assigned a personal business advisor. That's right, only nine ninety nine per month, no contract, and you're on your way. Call TMI at three four seven two three four five three oh four. That's three four seven two three four five three oh four, or visit their website at tmium.com. Tomorrow, the world will know your business. Is that it, guys? Hello? Did I do good?
The Collaborative Experience was created on the philosophy that together everyone achieves more. Founded by Julia D Shaw and Tony Coleman Brown, together they have over forty years of combined book industry and marketing know-how. This allows aspiring writers the opportunity to become published authors. Already, they've created over four Amazon bestsellers, including the Delayed But Not Denied series, and also their latest project, which was Our Stories, Our Voices, Black Men Speak Their Truth, which also debuted as a hot new release on Amazon's Bestsellers List. Let this dynamic duo guide you through the writing process and provide you with the support and education in publishing, social media and marketing and P R to help create a winning literary experience. Learn more at www dot the collaborative experience dot com.
Hi, this is attorney Stephanie James. We've been practicing law at this law firm for over thirty years. I'm a former assistant prosecutor in Kings County and currently a defense attorney to serve you better. We work harder to serve you better, so just call us for the lawyers you can trust. Six four six nine zero five nine thousand, six four six nine zero five seven zero zero one. We're located on Sudfin Boulevard, right near Hillside here in Jamaica, Queens, New York, for over thirty years serving the community. The law firm of Stephanie James, thank you.
I was saying that I hopefully we can get the uh have have another session with the Small Business Services uh, New York and 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 uh the new commissioner, John L. Dorris, and who happens to uh to be a a newly uh a a a new homeowner in the district and in the community as well, so that's good. Yeah.
Oh, great.
That's that's wonderful.
Always recruiting, always recruiting, right? And and uh um and and want to make sure that he he recognizes the value of the community, along with small business uh 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 from um uh Harry Wells in Denmark from over at York College, and get them in and speak specifically to the things that we're talking about and and be able to support the the beauty shops and 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 the barber shops as well, which is which is gonna be really important in how we're able to support these institutions so they can come back. But um so I'm gonna jump like immediately and 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 uh and uh attempt to support them. As I said, I got a call from them earlier.
Okay.
And and uh hopefully we we can be supportive um in doing so as well. But um, yeah, so that, you know, the investment part is 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 gonna be a a really big issue. Um, we have to be a little more sophisticated than we have been.
But I want to acknowledge you and thank you for your leadership in that area specifically, because you have been the bull by the horns and have uh have pointed it in the direction of where we need to go inside of that investment conversation. And uh you've you've spoken And uh, you've, you've spoken the words and you stood by them and made it happen. So I, I want to really acknowledge you and thank you at work because that was something that hadn't been done before with the vigor and, and enthusiasm and the intention um, before, and you, you for us in our community. So I want to acknowledge and thank you for that. I want to thank you too, Councilman Miller. And at this moment, I would like to say that you're listening to Our World, Our Power here on Spotify, iTunes, Google Play, TuneIn, and also Caribbean Buzz TV and Radio Roku and Apple TV. And please don't forget to follow us on our Facebook and Instagram. And I would definitely like to say thank you so much, Councilman Miller. You're doing an excellent job. As a matter of fact, all you, all the, the team of everybody's doing a great job and I, I take my hats off to you. Um, and I, I just want everything to continue very nice. I also saw that you work with Life Camp.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, listen, they, they, they are such an integral part of, of who we are as a community. And, 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 you know, we're not monolithic. I, 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 young people um, need credible messengers, need that assistance that we have, you know, uh, you know, gun violence was, was a part of our community. It's not, you know, certainly not mutually exclusive from, from who we are, and it was a reality, but how we manage that required Life Camp and, 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 and the other uh, Cure Violence and Credible Messengers that we have within our community that have allowed us to go in and address our, be prepared with the tools to address our young people. In fact, as you mentioned that, um, you know, I came on, we're talking that we were engaged in uh, uh, I was doing the um, city council hearing uh, with, with the police department and, and on social distancing. And a big part of that was, was for me, was that we have credible messengers, that we have organization, community-based organization familiar with every aspect of our community, whether it's our seniors, our young people, whatever, people who can flow, whether it is you, whether it is Glenn that, that dealing with the business community and the kids that congregate on there, like who, who really have relationships now, real-time relationship, that could be these social ambassadors, social distancing ambassadors that are necessary, that would take that away from the police department. And so at so many different levels, what we're seeing now, that the skills that, that these groups such as uh, Life Camp, shout out to Erica and, and her team um, do is, is, can be immediately pivoted and transformed to other aspects of our lives in our community, right? Because, you know, that's what this whole journey is, like each journey is what uniquely qualifies you for the next experience, right? Even if it's the things that you don't want to do, right? And all of a sudden, you find yourself with this skill set in this moment of crisis that who do we look to first? When we start talking about social distancing, we didn't need to see the videos of, of the police officers pounding on black and, and brown young men and, and women, right? Um, to know what the unintended or intended consequences was going to be of asking police to social distance, right? We already knew what was going to happen if that was the case. And so um, fortunately, we had the, the, the uh, credible messengers and, and the community-based groups and then the visuals that was already in place that could manage this, you know? So that, that being said, um, Life Camp is, is just been, you know, people, Life Camp is the essential workers that nobody even talks about. They're essential at COVID, pre-COVID, post-COVID. You know, Life Camp is, uh, uh, along with their, with, with their uh, partners and colleagues in Southeast Queens and, you know, King of Kings and, and the other groups, are the people that allow us the seamless quality of life that we have, that you may not even ever have to interact with those young people or be a victim of the gun violence perpetrated that or potentially was perpetrated simply because you have the Life Camps in our community and serving in our community. And that, that's real talk. That is real, real, real talk that we see it and it's so seamless and, and you don't see it.
Right.
You don't see it is because they're managing it, right? But trust me, it is absolutely happening, but they do such a, a fantastic job of managing this. Like, and, and, you know, the hats just have to go off that, you know, like, why are we so safe? Right? And, and give credit where credit is due. And, and I think now in fact, that the mayor announced this morning um, that the, the Cure Violence uh, folks from the Cure Violence Movement and the Crisis Management Movement um, are, are going to be at the forefront of social distancing throughout the city now. And, and so that is to show that, that speaks to the work, right? And that's all we have is you are what your record says you are, right? I mean, we all say a lot of things about ourselves that we would like to believe, but you are what your record says you are. And, 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 and in the case of, of, of Life Camp, that's it. Everybody can talk, we've had all this conversation about um, uh, public policy, policing, um, uh, 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 health crises, but the fact of the matter is, is that we've always treated Cure Violence and Crisis Management within that movement as a healthcare crisis, right? If you talk to Erica, you talk to any other leadership from, from, from uh, Crisis Management Movement, they will tell you that gun violence is a health, uh, a mental health crisis.
It is.
Right? Which makes them uniquely qualified to deal with a pandemic and other health crises, right? And, and so, yeah, we, we are, we're blessed to have them in our community.
As a matter of fact, I had them on the show about three weeks ago and um, last week, as I said, I live on Sutford Boulevard, they happened to be outside my building and they was giving out brochures and they was talking to the young people and I was so impressed. I saw the orange truck and I was just, oh wow, they're doing their thing.
Who else is going to do that work? Who else is going to be able to engage in a positive way, our young people like that? It is like, they're, they're, they're angels.
Yeah. Well, Councilman Miller, I was just thinking, you just kind of invited something. Um, I need to invite them to Sutford and Archer and, and uh,
Yeah. I, I, you know, I've had that conversation with them about that. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Follow up with Eric.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Um, that, yeah, that requires th- their particular expertise, in my opinion.
Yes, I, I agree because I've looked at security, I've looked at additional policing and that's not really been helping it. And so uh,
Yeah, yeah. And, 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 and a, a lot of times, a lot of those things lead to other problems.
Exactly.
Right? And, and I, I think that, you know, as I said, they, they are uniquely qualified. Yeah, I, I was, I, I, I remember uh, responding to uh, one of the store owners who had a problem with some of the locals that were just hanging out, jumped over the counter and assaulted them.
Same.
Yeah. At, at, at my, in, in my mind, at that moment, and I said to him, like, yeah, that was exactly what I was thinking a, at that moment, that um, organizations like that would be super helpful in, in, in those situations.
Yes. All right, I'll do that. Appreciate it. Very much so. Councilman Miller, I know you're a very busy man and I want to say thank you so much for being on Our World, Our Power. Jalissa, thank you for arranging this and making it all possible. Uh, you've been listening to Our World, Our Power with Glenn Greenwich and Lady Pauline and catch you soon. Thank you again. Thanks again, Councilman.
And to thank you, Ramadan Mubarak to all and in the best, uh, Hid Mubarak as well. And it is the teamwork that makes the dream work and you guys are certainly part of the team.
Well, if you need anything from us, just let us know. You know how to get ahold of us, right?
Absolutely.
And, and just before you sign off, how can people reach you or reach you?
Can, can, can Jalissa jump in on our, our, and give you all the social media commentary and all of, all of our?
Yes, so you can reach us on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. Facebook, Denique Miller, Twitter, I Denique Miller, Instagram is I Denique Miller. We have our webpage, council.nyc.gov slash Denique-miller-COVID for any COVID updates and resources that we mentioned, um, resources from around the city. Um, town halls that we've done are also posted there, homeowners' rights, taxpayers' rights, all of that is available to you. So please check it out, give us a follow and stay tuned.
Okay. And Glenn from the Southern Bid, please tell people how they can reach you.
They can always reach me at seven one eight two nine one twenty-one.
Okay. And, and you can reach Our World at six four six three four oh seven two seven one or Our World Media. And if you all need anything, any help, we're most willing to work with everybody, you know?
And, and we continue to work remotely. So if you call our number at seven one eight seven seven six three seven hundred, we are there.
All right. Thank you all. Our World, where your news reflects you and your community. Thank you.